...zoning board hearing, we'll take up a couple of items just on the general business. I have a, do I have a motion for the approval of amendments from the last meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by John, have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. As we've been alerted to, there is a, the application has formally been filed for the 300 unit apartment complex in Milford. The, the original scheduled public hearing for that in Upper Town Hall is currently scheduled for December 6th. I believe there was a typo in tonight's, yesterday's daily news that showed the 27th. We will work through the, that issue, but clearly it wasn't this typo. So the next regular board meeting will be on December 14th. And the public hearing for the 40B apartment complex will be on the 6th. I've asked Kelly to make sure that everybody has copies of the updated regulations concerning the 40B application process. And as you know, we continue to get documents on a daily basis. We do have RFPs out right now for consultants that will assist the board. And more information, of course, will be coming shortly. The first application is on Larry Mignosa. Am I spelling that correctly, Larry? How do you spell it? Pronounce it?
Mignosa.
Migno, I was close. Mignosa. Come on up, Larry. Come up to the microphone, please. Let me read the application. This is on a application of 7 Venice Street for the variance for the provisions of Section 2.3 and/or 2.4 zoning bylaws. As those, those provisions relate to a possible land located on the southerly side intersection of Venice Street and Turn Street in Milford known as numbered 7 for Venice. The variance relief is sought to permit the construction of a detached 24 by 28-foot garage closer to the lot line than otherwise is permitted. Concerning the application, the questions concerning the application, you know, what, what type of the zoning bylaw are you looking to get varied indicated it was a side distance and a back property line? Asked what circumst, what circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, and topography of the subject premises, which would not generally affect other land in the zoning district? The applicant states that the house is sitting diagonal on the property. And if the variance were not granted, what hardship would be caused by the circumstances above? In the application, the applicant indicated none. He felt that it would match existing houses and enough distance between buildings. With that, and in the file, there's a, an engineering plan here, drawn by, it looks like Dennis O'Brien. The planning board did review this at their regular scheduled meeting on October 17th. And they recommended four in favor, one opposed. See town plan a letter. The applicant requested a variance to construct a 24 by 28 detached garage on the subject property. The proposed garage will be 10 feet from the south side property line and 15 feet is required under the zone. The lot is not, is non-conforming as to area width and frontage. It should also be noted that this is a corner lot with unpaved Turn Street bordering on the north. Thus, there are two front yards and two side yards. Also, the existing houses placed at an angle on Venice Street. The variance previously granted on this project in 2008 was not acted upon in a timely manner as since lapped. Therefore, the board did recommend a favorable report be sent off to the zoning board. With that, I'm going to turn it over to you, kind of give us an idea of what you're trying to do. Did you, do you, you don't have any big plans with you? Just what was submitted?
No, yeah.
No, okay.
Um, just like I said, it's a detached 24 by 28 garage. And I'm going to have some storage up top, and that's it. It's just a one-story. The walls will be like 12 feet. And it's going to have a six-pitch roof, nothing fancy, and it's going to match my house. Same siding, everything. I was previously, I did get the variance in 2008, like you said.
You got the variance in 2008? You just never racked it on it?
Yeah, I ended up with cancer and I didn't have a chance.
I'm sorry to hear that. I'm sorry to hear that. The, just quick, one more quick question. The loft on, in the storage, is there a staircase that's going to be supplied to there?
It's going to be, I haven't decided where I'm going to put it, but it's going to be inside the.
Okay. All right. What will happen is, I'll address it with members of the board first, and then I'll take it to the audience if they have any additional questions. Bobby, I'll start it. You're into the table.
Okay. Good evening. How far is the nearest building to the garage? You know? It'd be, um, I'm looking at this, if you want to. For who's, um? This, this lot right here? Where your garage is? Is it, is the?
Yeah, so they, they probably have about 20 feet before their house.
So here's, here's the plot right here, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And the garage is going to go over here? With Venice, here's the corner turn.
Yeah, so the garage will be on this.
We're over here, right?
Yep.
And how far is the next?
So they have about 20, 20 feet, or I'd say 25 feet before the property line.
Okay. And is it a, Bill, is it a garage itself? Is it the house or?
It's the house.
The house itself?
We're five Venice Street. I'm right here. Yeah, we agree to the variance.
Yeah, but she, um.
You, you live right here?
It's a garage.
I'm at five.
At five, okay.
Doesn't really look like, does this look like what we have there? I, I thought it was we were straight to the.
That's my house.
And you're, oh.
That's the garage.
Your house is a garage, you're over here.
But this is going to be perpendicular?
This is the property line.
What am I, what's my other one? Parallel, parallel to the property line?
Yes, correct. This is my property line.
Your house is probably right here.
If you could look over here, may I have a?
Their house is right here.
But our houses are parallel, right?
No, mine's sideways. At an angle on the property, I don't know.
Okay.
All right. If you can step out there, it would be helpful.
Ma'am, can you come over here? So this is your lot right here?
Our lot?
That's you?
Yes.
Right here. Five, okay.
Yeah, so you have five.
All right.
And you are, twenty, you have a house, no, no other structure?
Yeah, just a, well, there's a little shed and trap, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. John?
In relationship to Torren Street, the garage is, Torren is the dirt road, correct? It's a non-paved road?
It's, yeah, it's not even, it's.
It's not even a street, really?
Yeah, it's, the street is actually way behind me.
So is the garage facing away from the street or towards that?
The garage will be facing Venice Street?
Yeah, it'll be facing Venice.
Okay. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Which, the only question I have is, is you've got 24 by 28. Is there a reason why you chose 28? 28's pretty big. I'm just asking that question.
Because when I was going to build that, I had a motorcycle at the time, and I wanted a little extra room to put my motorcycle in. And I'm planning on talking my wife into letting me have another one.
Why don't you throw it?
She doesn't know it yet.
If you need an extra couple, if you need an extra couple of feet, you may, you may want to get a snowmobile in there, too.
I know.
You have any questions?
What kind of bike are you getting?
I had a Harley-Davidson Fat Boy.
All right. While you were discussing this, we couldn't see what you were discussing over here. Your house sits like this.
You got it.
Correct.
Garage is going to sit like this.
Yes, correct.
House to the right, you've got 10 feet to the line, and then you've got 20, 25 feet from the property line to, your house is on the right.
Correct.
Yes. Same as the house.
Okay. And 28 feet deep, you want to stay with that?
Yes, sir.
Fifteen in the back? I'm good.
Charlie?
Yeah, I just got one quick question. Where do you park your cars now?
In my driveway.
Which is where the garage is going to be, or is it on the?
Garage is going to be just at the very end of my.
All right. So the cars are going to be on the same side of the house?
The driveway.
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Ready, Charlie?
That's it.
Anybody else care to be heard on this particular matter? If not, you have the last word before we close the hearing. You good to go?
I'm good to go.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Move to approve as submitted?
Yep.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by John. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Now, there's a 20-day appeal period. You'll get a, you'll get something in the mail from town council. Make sure you record it this time before you build it.
Same day.
You got it.
Mr. Chairman, I want to add one thing. If you don't get the bike, if your wife doesn't like you, you're going to go to 24 feet?
No. I'll talk her into it.
Thank you.
Yeah, you should have, you get home.
As long as my neighbor doesn't tell her, we'll be good.
Do you look up at the right with a TV there?
The next hearing is on the application of David and Elaine Phillips. Will you step forward, if you would? All right, I'll start reading this as we get ready. You know what I don't have? I don't have the decision paperwork in here. You know, the sheets that we use for approvals?
Okay, I mean.
No, that's fine. We'll work through it. Okay, this is on the application of David and Elaine Phillips, 30 Howard Street for variance from the provisions of Section 2.3 and/or 2.4 of the zoning bylaws. As those provisions relate to a 46,000 plus or minus square foot parcel of land located on the northerly side of Howard Street known and numbered as 36 Howard. Petition is proposed to divide the property into two lots. One lot to contain an existing dwelling and the second lot to be available for single-family The applicant indicates that the Section 2.4 and 2.5 frontage and area to create two lots, current zoning requirement, requirements, a minimum of 25,000 square feet. In this instance, Lot 1 would remain at 21,161, and Lot 2 would require 25,168, which are both less than the current area requirements. Ensuring the question, what circumstances relate to the condition of the shape, topography, and subject of the premises, which do not generally affect other land in the zoning district? The applicant states that the parcel was rezoned, RB and RC, the parcel was rezoned in 91 to RC from IB. It is a unique triangular-shaped lot with 46,330 square feet and over 400 feet of frontage. The existing dwelling and garage area are not equal to lot, but instead sits entirely on the southwestly side of the parcel. The shape of the lot and the location of the dwelling are unique to this lot and does not generally affect the district. What circumstances does this affect of concerning the question of above? And the applicant indicates that without the requested relief, it would cause a hardship by preventing the use of additional parcel because of the amount of frontage. The proposed use of the premises and harmony with the neighborhood and the addition of a new single-family residence will not cause a detriment to the public good. This did get off to the planning board on October 17th. Planning board did recommend unfavorable. Town plan a letter indicates that the applicant is requesting a variance to subdivide a conforming lot to create two, two standard lots. The existing lot, again, is 46,329,000 square feet, and 45,000 square feet is required in the RC zone. The proposed new lots will be 21 and change and 25 and change. The lot is conforming as to area and contains one single-family dwelling. The dwelling is non-conforming as to setbacks, however, there appears to be no conditions whatsoever relating to the land itself or the surroundings that create a hardship. Contrary to the statements by the applicant, otherwise, the property has been completely within the RC zone since 1970, 1997. Therefore, the board, the planning board does recommend an unfavorable report be sent off with the zoning board. With that, Aldo, you have the chair.
Thank you. Do you want me to sit down or can I stand up?
As long as you've got a microphone in your hand so everybody can hear you, you'd be fine. Grab one for me.
How do I know it's on?
It's on, yep, yep.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Aldo Consigli. I'm an attorney in Milford, and I represent Mr. and Mrs. Phillips. As was listed in the petition, they bought this property at 36 Howard Street in 1981, 85, I'm sorry, from Dominic Calucci. And at the time they bought it, it was in an industrial B-zone. The requirements of that zone is we had to have 200 and some odd feet plus 80,000 square feet. Obviously, it was an industrial land, so that the residential use was non-conforming. We had not enough land, we had enough frontage, and we had the wrong kind of use. So what happened is in 1986, I believe, 1989, the town of Milford rezoned this area. And what happened is we went from an IB to an RC, which, and I want to just pass this around to the board because I think this is somewhat critical. The property where we are is, I'll start with Mr. Capizello. It's an RB-zone all the way up to the railroad tracks. We're a little bit past the railroad tracks. I'm shaking. Right there, which probably begs the question of why our property wasn't put into an RB-zone instead of an RC. Be that as it may, we're very close to the RB-zone. I don't want to belabor what the requirements are that we have to prove in spite of the negative recommendation from the planning board, but there are three basic tests that we have to meet. One is that, as you pointed out, we have to show that we have a unique situation that's based on shape, topography, and/or soil conditions that affect our parcel and not the zoning district generally, so that the effect is to cause a hardship that affects the piece of property, not the zoning district generally, which means basically that this hardship would exist no matter who owned the property, whether I owned it, they owned it, or anyone of you owned it. It's our position tonight that this shape of this property and the fact that the house is basically on the, I don't know, the southwestly eighth of the lot, creates a problem unto itself. Also, given the fact that the shape of the lot is unique, we have also a topographical problem in that from where the house is, if you go back up here, it probably rises some 18 to 20 feet. So that where these, these are all woods, and where this wooded area is, if you were standing there, you'd be looking down onto the house and the garage where they are now. As the bottom plan, I don't know if you can see this down there, can you? I can take it down.
We have copies here, too.
All right. The bottom one is, shows our proposed division of the property. We're going to have 200 feet on each side of the lot. Now, the only problem, obviously, is that, and I, you know, I can't stress this enough, is that we conform with the neighborhood in that if you look at the frontage of all these lots, all these lots are long and skinny. They have all this backland. Obviously, if we could have acquired more land, probably it would have been a better idea, but there was a guy with a little deeper pockets than we had that bought this property at Fonzo, and he's got a subdivision up there. So it's our contention that what they want to do is divide this so that they can build a house on this other section. This is an older home. It's a two-story up and down. They have to go downstairs to do the laundry. They got to go upstairs to go to bed. Typical things when you get older that you don't want to have to do. Anyway, going back to what I have to show, I also have to convince you that the granting of this variance will not cause any problem to the public good. What the public good is in this case is basically set forth in 1.2 of the zoning bylaw, and that is that the classification of land under the purposes of the zoning bylaw for the town of Milford is a systematic classification of land to maximize the use of the property. In our particular case, we're not asking for any kind of a use variance. What we're asking for is to divide the lot, which is probably what was intended. I'd point out to you guys that our lot is number 36. We're way over here. Our land goes all the way down, and the next numbered house is 42. Now, I know that doesn't mean anything, and they could have given it any number, but the numbers in between, 38 and 40, if there are such numbers, are basically our land. We're not asking for three lots, we're just asking to be able to build on this lot here, the second lot. Now, the other contention that we have to meet is that our variance can be granted without digressing or nullifying from the purpose of the bylaw. And again, in this particular case, by putting up another single-family house, there's not going to be an appreciable amount of traffic that's going to increase. There's not going to be an overburdening of the school system. We're not going to be in a situation where police or fire protection is going to be diminished. What we're doing is basically, we're conforming to what the purpose of the bylaw is. And that is, one of the purposes, if you read Section 1.2, is to try to increase the tax base for the town of Milford by allowing growth of residential units and properties that conform to the area. The nearest houses, this one here, both of these houses were here since before the turn of the 20th century, not the 21st, so they've been there a long time. It was dirt road at one point, and the, again, the biggest thing that we have is that the RB-zone is so close that these lots don't look any different than the lots in the RB-zone. And it's for that reason we would ask you gentlemen to vary the zoning bylaw to allow the division of this property into two lots, to allow my client to build a house on that property that right now is situated up in the wooded area.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Charlie, Bobby's on, on this particular one, so that you're aware. Full tape. Okay. All right, Charlie, I'm going to start at your end of the table.
Okay. The house that's going to be built, who's going to, is that going to be for the owners of the?
That's what their plan is now, yes.
Right. And then the, the house that they're presently occupying now would be put up to sale to another party?
Well, I'll speak for them, and if I'm wrong, you can interrupt me. Basically, what they told me originally was that they have two sons, and what their plan was, was to have one of the sons buy it, so that it'd be like, like the Kennedy compound, except a little bit smaller. So they'd have, you know, they'd have the, the son next door. Whether or not it's going to work out that way, I don't want to mislead the board, it may be that after they get the new house built, they're going to wind up having to sell it.
The bottom house, okay.
The small, I mean, the big one with the.
The present residents that they have, you know?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else?
Mark?
How many square feet's the house you live in nowadays?
19.
1,800?
Mm-hmm.
And what are you going to build? Do you have any idea? Approximate?
Yeah, no bigger than that, probably smaller.
Just a one-floor ranch we want.
One-floor ranch? Two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
Mm-hmm.
Both?
Probably two, yeah.
Well, grandkids, maybe three.
That was, that was actually going to be my question. We've asked and requested before in similar situations like this to restrict or to, to go down the road of a two-bedroom versus a three-bedroom, which, which kind of helps the, the whole system. The other aspect is, since you already have, you're trying to do this and separate it, we've asked in the past that, that some of the buildings try to come into conformity on each lot as well, which, right now, the garage on the other lot is not in conformity. So I guess my question would be that, providing how, if this is granted, is that garage in such a poor condition that it can be removed from the site, and if you want to take it down? It's just a question.
Okay.
Because it does not conform.
Too close to the sidelines.
It's just too close. It's, it's, it's way close to the, it's on the property line on the other lot. I'm asking, I'm just asking the question. Because if I don't, someone else will.
Years ago, it used to be a chicken coop because it's, the house is 18, 40.
Oh, you need a special permit for the chickens.
Why? No. We, we just did it over and made it into a one-car garage. We don't even park our car in there, so I don't have any issue with removing it.
And then you have a gravel driveway as well? So you, so you, you park both, in both sides?
Sometimes. That's so they can get in, excuse me. No, that, I, I asked him that, too, and what he said is, that's so they can get in there, because he builds a pile of brush from the forest area up on the top of the hill, which is in here, and so that allows him to get in with his tractor, and then they get the pile of brush.
Can't get into the lot any other way.
Is the property being farmed at all?
No.
Okay.
It's all trees.
It's all trees? I didn't have an opportunity to drive up there. I'm okay for now. Dave?
I'm all set.
John?
No, no questions.
What?
I'm all set.
Anybody else want to be heard on the application? Please come forward, grab a microphone, state your name and your, where you live, please.
I'm Mark Lydell of 37 Howard Street, and I want to first note that the map that accompanies the zoning various, variance application is improperly labeled. That the property that is 39 Howard Street on the map is actually a property that's owned by myself and my wife Angie, which is 37 Howard Street, directly across the street from the proposed Kennedy compound.
Phillips compound.
Phillips compound. And our concern is that, of course, this would not comply with requirements in terms of lot size in the area, and we're wondering if this is potentially precedent-setting and that others might want to follow suit and construct secondary properties on their property, or actually parcel out their properties to do the same thing. We enjoy living where we live, right across from a nice vacant space owned by the Phillips, but we're concerned with the construction noise and just the disturbance of the peace and tranquility we already enjoy at our home. We bought the home knowing that that piece of land across the street would probably not be built upon because of the zoning, but now we're kind of concerned that that might soon change.
Hi, my name is Angie Gomes Lydell. I am Mark's wife. I live at 37 Howard Street. I do best with reading, so I'm just going to read from my notes, if you don't mind. If the use being prevented in the parcel of land is that of building another home, that is not justification for a variance to be granted. A landowner's desire to maximize profits from the, from his land does not qualify as a substantial hardship. The RC zone is defined by lots being a minimum of 45,000 square feet. Dividing the lot violates not only the minimum lot size bylaw, but also creates two homes on 46,330 square foot parcel of land, which is a creative means of violating the bylaw, which states that in residential districts, only one principal permitted building shall be located on a single lot. If the Board of Appeals agrees that not being allowed to build a second home on an acre of land in an RC zone is a hardship, then it is admitting to a hardship it has set on hundreds of homeowners, which sets a precedent for hundreds of homeowners being granted variances to divide parcels of land and overpopulate the area. Granting this variance nullifies, or at the very least substantially derogates, from the intent or purpose of such bylaw. Milford's bylaws are designed with a number of intents in mind, such as to lessen congestion in the streets, to prevent overcrowding of land in undue concentration of population, to conserve the value of land in buildings, to conserve natural resources such as trees, and to promote the development of the natural scenic and aesthetic qualities of the community. I encourage the board to hold fast to these intents as it considers this variance and the precedent its decision will set. Sorry, I was a little nerve-wracking. Where's this go?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else care to be heard?
Can't get that loader.
First of all, with any variance, especially with this one, it's not precedent-setting as far as you understand precedent-setting, because every situation is unique, and it's based not only on the fact that there's 46,000 square feet, but also the shape and topography of the land. So it doesn't set any precedent unless you've got a piece of land that's pretty close to identical to that. A long triangular piece of land, which this isn't really a triangle, but I'm, you know, I don't know what the geometric term would be. But, what was it?
Boomerang.
Whatever it is. But anyway, it doesn't set a precedent, because you'd have to have a piece of land that has the topography difference, which is what we have, which is what the statute requires. The whole purpose of a variance is it's a safety valve, and what it does, it allows people that have a unique piece of land to be able to maximize that piece of land and do what the bylaw basically allows other people to do, and that's maximize the use of their property. You know, as far as disruption during construction and things like that, I'd have to say that probably most, if not all, the construction would be during the day when most people are at work, and if you work at home, I'm sorry, but you know, that's the problem. It would be for a period of months, not years, and it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't belabor anything, and it would be better, and I shouldn't say better, it would be a lot easier to have, you know, for the line of sight purpose and things like that, a house on the property rather than just a wooded lot. And I know aesthetically, you know, it's not your property, but you look out across the street, and you see a nice forest. Well, you know, that's, that's, I don't know what to tell you. It's his property, he can do what he wants with it, assuming, you know, he can get a variance. Now, as far as that's concerned, I suppose if he wanted to, he could put some type of, cut the woods and put some kind of an outbuilding up there to use for something else. It wouldn't be a residence, but it would have the same effect as far as you're concerned, cutting the trees and putting a building there. And he wouldn't have to get a variance for that. What we're asking for is a variance to allow for the construction of a single-family house, probably a two-bedroom house, as opposed to a, you know, I'm sure your house is probably a lot, I'm not sure, I would suspect your house is a lot bigger than probably the house they're going to put in there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment. It's, I'm glad the property was actually rezoned, because back in 1991, this would have been, this was owned IB. If IB was over there, there'd be an industrial building on the site right now. So it's an advantage that this thing actually was changed over to the residential application. Maybe the right RC, IB wasn't properly done, but clearly, at least, thank God, it's not an industrial building that's coming in front of us here. So if anybody else wants to be heard on the application, if not, you have your last word before we close the hearing.
I'm set.
You're all set? Okay, thank you. I have a recommendation with, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make the motion to approve.
Approve, two, three, what do you want?
Three.
Three-bed?
Yep.
I have a motion for, to approve, we have a three-bedroom on the site. Is there a second?
I'll second with the stipulation that it doesn't go past 18 hundred square feet, and it stays one floor.
I don't know, I can't agree to that. Maybe, maybe no more than two.
Okay.
If you want to do that.
Or one floor?
Yeah.
As requested.
Any other comments? I have a motion, I have a motion for a, to allow for a three-bedroom home. I think what you're saying is not to exceed 2,000 square feet.
2,000 square feet total. Because of the uniqueness of the piece of property, it's, it is, it's unique.
Is there a second for that? You made the motion, he amended it, so I amended that.
Can I make a motion to approve?
You made the motion to approve that.
Three-bedroom with 2,000 square feet.
Okay.
So I'll second that.
No, you can't second it, John's going to...
I'll third it.
All right, we have a second. All those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. So you have the 20-day appeal period, so anybody can come in and file an appeal within 20 days.
Thank you.
All right, with that, thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Go take them all to them.
Still don't dump that.
Okay. The next hearing is on the application of Vineyard Point Ventures. Charlie, you're on this one. Bobby, you're off.
Come on, so.
Good evening.
Playing solo tonight? Bobby, playing solo tonight?
Playing for, shoulder, excuse my son.
This is on the application of Vineyard Point Ventures, 49 Cedar Street, for variance relief from the provisions of Section 2.4 and 2.5 of the zoning bylaw, or an amendment to an earlier decision by the Zoning Board of Appeals in relation to a two parcels of land located on the westerly side of Asylum Street, shown on Assessor's Map 39 as lots 49 and 49B, and known and numbered as 34 Asylum Street. The variance relief is sought in order to reconfigure the subject property, raise the dwelling on Lot 49, and divide the property on two regularly shaped lots available for single-family construction on each lot. The Planning Board did review this at November 7, and recommended the following. Four in favorable, one was opposed. Town plan letter indicates powerfying that the applicant request of variance to reconfigure the property. Property consists of two non-conforming lots and are considered merged by zoning. The variance for this application was granted by the ZBA on June 29. However, an error in the survey was discovered recently that necessitates a correction of the variance. Specifically, the proposal was to raise the existing dwelling situated on Lot 49 and divide the property into two regularly shaped lots. One single-family dwelling would then be built on each of the new lots. Variance for lot area width and frontage are necessary for the approval. Therefore, they recommended a favorable report be sent off to the Zoning Board. With that, I believe this is the application. We can dispense with it if it's the same as it, you have a motion to dispense with the reading of this?
Yeah, I make a motion we dispense with the reading.
I have a motion to dispense with the reading, as long as it's as indicated in the application, is it is? It is? With that, all those in favor, dispense with the reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? That's unanimous. With that, Mr. Antonellis, why don't you clear up what the status is?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I apologize for taking the board's time again on the same petition. You may recall that we came in with a parcel of property and suggested two scenarios for the variance. One was to create a conforming lot and a non-conforming lot, and the second, which is the one that you chose, was to create two lots that were non-conforming, but to have them identical in shape, size, et cetera. And so those lots were approved to have 39,750 square feet, and that specific square footage was placed in the variance. When the engineer went out to do the final plan that would be necessary to subdivide the lots, he noted that the prior surveyor had made a miscalculation in the overall square footage. And so, as a result, we lost 897 square feet per lot. So I was stuck with the dilemma of having an engineer do an inaccurate plan and bring it in, or come back to the board to get the variance properly codified, and request that it be amended to allow for the two lots to be 38,853 square feet, as shown on the plan that I submitted with the application, which is a reduction of 897 square feet per lot. We would again maintain the same, the same shape. The lots would look identical, the houses would still fit on the property, so that they would not violate any of the setback sidelines, et cetera. And in essence, we have 97% of the area that we thought we have, is, we lost 3%, so we're requesting relief for the 3% we've lost. Nothing else is changing, still two single-family houses. I obviously can't sell them with a plan that doesn't conform to a written variance. You know, it wasn't, because we were so specific in the square footage, because of the way we did it, that it locked me in, and I can't have plans and variances that don't match. So that's why we're here.
Charlie, I'll start with you. Any questions, Charlie?
No, I don't have any questions on this.
Mark?
1,800 square feet total? I mean, that's how much we're off.
We're off, yeah, that's correct. Eight, 1,800 square feet total, that's correct. 897 square feet per lot.
What made you get the other surveyor?
Well, we went out to get the, to get a plan done. We had based it off a survey that was of record.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the survey that was of record...
Was incorrect.
Was incorrect.
That's when you would come to us initially.
Right, and so I used the...
Surveyor record.
I used the survey of record for that, and then we used that square footage to design the lots. And then, obviously, you know, as the board knows, a actual, true instrument survey is expensive, but also necessary. So I guess, you know, maybe we should have done the survey first, but at any rate, because we had a survey of record we relied on.
Yep.
Dave?
I'm all set.
John?
No, no questions.
Just, is this a water easement that's on the plan, Joe?
Correct.
Is that going to West Street?
Yes.
Okay. Are you tying into that?
Yes, I believe so.
But it's not a sewer easement, just a water in? Anybody else in the audience want to be heard on this application? No? Okay. Close the hearing, if you have another word to speak.
I don't at this time.
You're all set to good?
Save my words.
You sure you got this right?
Save my words for the next one.
Great. All right, thank you. Pleasure of the board. Vote to approve?
Approve.
As submitted?
As submitted.
Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mark. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Antonellis, for correcting the issue. Okay. Moving right along. Let's go with Algo's piece. Okay, next is on the application of Neguero Real Estate LLC. I have a conflict on this, so I can moderate the hearing and read through the applications, but I will not be involved. I believe we have enough members, Bobby, John, David, Mark, and Charlie, to handle it.
Joe, do you have a, do you have a plan that you can show us, that we can read up here?
We have additional problems.
I'll read the application.
You're on this one too, Joe?
This is on the, this is on the application of Neguero Real Estate LLC. 23 Lock and Lane Hope deal for a special permit pursuant to Section 3.1.1 and 3.1.4 of the zoning bylaws, in relation to land on the northerly side of West Street, known and numbered as 21-23 West Street and 27 West Street. Special permit relief is sought in order to permit the conversion or utilization of a funeral home facility on the property into four dwelling units for utilization in combination with the existing residential uses already taken on the property. Joe, we have an attached narrative, is if you're going to address this, I'll take a motion to dispense with the reading, providing it's as it's been submitted.
Yes, I intend to address the narrative.
With that, do I have a motion to address the narrative, to, as submitted, to dispense?
Yeah, dispense with the reading, please.
All those who agree to dispense with the reading, as long as it's indicated as in the application? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Let me read into the record prior to that, what the Planning Board has done on this as well. And I'll paraphrase, save some time, I'll paraphrase this. The Planning Board did review this on November 7, recommends a favorable report be passed off to the Zoning Board. Town plan a letter to Chairman Patrick O'Neil, Planning Board, the applicant does request a special permit change from a non-conforming funeral home to residential uses on the property. The funeral home will be converted entirely for residential use, with two new bedroom units on the first floor, and a two, and a new two-bedroom unit being added to the existing unit on the second floor, for a total of four units in the building. The single-family dwelling to the rear of the property will remain, and the adjacent garage with an apartment on the second floor will also remain. The existing two-family dwelling to the west of the funeral home will also remain with no modifications. There will be a total of eight units within the proposed site plan. The applicant also proposes the merger of both parcels into one parcel, one large parcel for the purpose of the compound. The proposed residential complex will result in a development that is, that is more in tune with the surrounding residential neighborhood, traffic generation and parking will be dramatically improved, and what the proposed changes. Therefore, the Planning Board voted to send a recommendation off to the Zoning Board of Appeals. With that, Mr. Antonellis, please...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Give us an idea what you're doing.
Members of the board, a rather unique petition tonight, and one that I can tell you that I got very excited about, because ordinarily...
Doesn't take much.
Ordinarily, we're coming into the board and requesting to take lots apart, to separate existing parcels of property, and to make additional buildings on land, as many of the petitions are before you. Tonight, what we're asking is, is that you approve a merger of two long-existing parcels of property that have had multiple uses on them, located on West Street. Obviously, as Milford residents, you're all familiar with the Kellet Funeral Home and the overall parcels of property there. The Kellet family have long owned the major parcel of property, which is the funeral home, which had their residence in the back with the garage attached, and there is an apartment over the garage. They also purchased quite some time ago the abutting parcel of property, which has an existing two-family house on that property. The funeral home, as you know, has been a long staple in the Milford community, and has provided, obviously, services for Milfordians for many, many years, and I'm sure you also know that Jim Kellet recently passed away, and his widow Janet has chosen to not move forward in that business. So the parcels were put up for sale, and Marlon Neguera, who is my client, who is a very creative young man, and has been an excellent client, came up with the idea of merging the parcels and rehabilitating the property into solely a residential compound. And I heard the word used earlier tonight, so it is, in fact, what we're doing. We're going to take the property line that exists here out, merge the parcels, and end up with three structures, two units existing here, so nothing new there, just some minor cosmetic work to be done in the house. Completion of the apartment over the garage, which has never been completed, was started, which would be a two-bedroom apartment, and the conversion of the existing funeral home into four two-bedroom apartments. There is an existing two-bedroom apartment upstairs in that building now. Marlon would then be adding new units to that building, so we're going to have, in essence, three new units in this building. Again, there's one existing, one new unit in this building, which is almost existing, it was never finished, no change to the duplex. The elimination of this lot line will allow other improvements to the property that are more site plan-oriented. This is the property as it presently exists, with all the pavement shown, and a, just a rendition of where people ordinarily park on it. The next plan that I will show you is the proposed plan. Do a better job, hold that one for me. See if I can just drop this one off, it'd be better. The second plan I'm going to show you is the as-built, is the proposed plan, and this is showing a definitive parking plan, which will result in a minimum of two parking spaces per unit. So that is in compliance with the Milford zoning bylaw. We will have the parking lot configured so that there will be a reduction in curb cuts along West Street, okay? So we're going to knock out the curb cut that is here servicing this building, take that out completely, and we will have an entranceway, one-way entranceway in on the Godfrey Brook side of the building. This is the Brook right here, and as you know, there's multiple duplexes over here in the old Wesley House property, I remember it as the Wesley House property. There are existing catch bases in the parking lot that have picked up the runoff over the years. Those will be rebuilt, rehabilitated, you know, make sure that they're cleaned, et cetera. And then we'll have a drive aisle that is of sufficient width for fire trucks and emergency vehicles to service. The turning radiuses were reviewed prior by the Planning Board, and Marlon's engineer spent a lot of time on this. And then we're going to create parking spaces behind the building, and a couple of handicapped space up here, and some planters. This area here will be a planted patio and area to serve the residents here. Again, you'll have free access up to this parcel of, to the existing house, and then there'll be an exit out. There will also be an entrance on this side to serve the duplexes primarily. Again, we've made considerations for handicap parking space there. So the overall scope of the property... So, the overall scope of the property, there will not be any real construction on it. There may be, again, some building rehabilitation. And to that end, obviously, as the funeral home will cease to exist as a funeral home, Marlon intends to redo the front of that building so that it has a look of a residential home. And again, I would note to you that he's only gonna put one entrance in the front, which, again, fits in with the scope of your present zoning bylaw because when you do a duplex now in Milford, you're supposed to do it with one entrance. So, we picked up on those existing bylaws and tried to incorporate them into that plan. So, I think overall, the scope and breadth of the work that's been put into this has been substantial. And relative to the special permit criteria, we believe, again, we're talking now about a special permit, not a variance, so we're talking about impact on the community. And I believe strongly that this is a situation where we're going to take an existing use, one that's obviously been part of the fabric of Milford. We have our funeral homes in Milford are located predominantly in residential areas. Obviously, you know, all our families have gone through the multitudes of the funeral homes here. And we can all say that when we go to a wake, we have a problem parking because the parking ends up on the streets surrounding the funeral homes. In this particular case, about the narrowest spot on West Street is where this building is located. So, the change of this use will eliminate any need for on-street parking. Okay? It'll also take off the congestion that occurs through the situation when a funeral occurs in the morning, backing people up at the lights while the funeral procession goes. That will be eliminated from West Street. The only uses that will be on West Street, for that first stretch of West Street, okay, which is zoned residential, will be residential. You won't pick up any businesses, really, until you get to the auto service store and the package store that are down where the old Maldonians building was. So, I really think that what you've got is a situation where we're taking a parcel of property and doing as little as possible to it physically to bring it more into compliance with the present zoning in the town of Milford, to relieve some traffic congestion on West Street and to provide, I think, some quality housing in Milford that will be controlled by one owner, okay? And Marlon is in property management business himself. This will give him an opportunity to expand his own businesses here in Milford and, I think, provide some new housing on West Street that will be quality housing. And again, I think that it fits well within, as a community, where we're going. We're gonna eliminate traffic on a residential street. And all we're gonna put back on there is traffic, is houses, excuse me, our apartments that are gonna be serviced with no need to be parking on the street, more than adequate parking on the site, parking with handicapped access, properly lined. There'll be rebuilt staircases to the back of these buildings to provide proper access and egress for safety purposes. Everything will be brought up to code. And again, I think this is, you know, I come here a lot. And I really like this petition because it's, again, always used to taking things apart. This is one putting things together. And I think serves a great purpose for a young businessman in the community and also provides an exit plan for someone who...for Janet and her family, who have also been members of the community. And the owner is here tonight. That, I think, just shows you the interest of everybody involved. So, with that, I'll stop talking and let you ask us some questions.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, Charlie, I'll start with you.
Yeah, so what is the total number of families on the property once this is finished?
So, there'll be two in the duplex, that's two. A single-family in the house, that's three. An apartment, four, and four, eight.
Eight, okay. And the existing duplexes, where, on the left-hand side?
It's on the left. That's...that lot is separate. She...that could be sold by itself. Okay? Obviously, take a stipulation of that because I think that provides for better management in a house with a perfect flow of the traffic and the parking.
And the parking.
That's correct.
Dave?
The main building, is that a complete gotten rehab inside?
Inside.
Okay. Is there a plan to sprinkle of that building on the inside?
We will have to do it by code.
By code?
I'm assuming that, you know, the addition again, and I don't know what the code is, but I'm gonna guess it's a possibility.
Okay. So, I would put stipulations on it that says no more than eight units, and it'll be deed restricted. And also, that there would be no further subdivision of lot after this is put together, which means that at a later date, 10 years from now, if he says, "Hey, I wanna sell this duplex", and then come back, it's gonna be deed restricted that he can't.
I...well, I understand that. I've advised Marlon that the only possibility would be to condominiumize the property, which you can do with any use. So, you could have a unit deed, but you could...you would still have to have... The land itself would have to be owned by one individual.
Correct. So, you're okay with those two stipulations?
We believe that it's the appropriate way to manage this property in the future.
Okay. I'm okay as long as we do those two things. Okay.
John?
Is this a two-family on the left presently?
Yes, it is presently a two-family. It has been all along.
Okay. And it's gonna stay?
Yes.
Two-family?
No further units in that. And again, we're locked into the units. We understood that coming in.
Yeah. Now, we doing renovations to that building also?
Yes.
Kinda sad to see the funeral business, Kellett funeral business, gone. But things change, I guess.
It will relieve a lot of congestion on West Street.
We think so. And again, you know, I...again, I...all of our funeral homes are in residential, you know, Edwards and Sargent, Kellett, they've all been Debra Squaw before that when it was on the corner. Talk about traffic there. So, you know, we're used to it. But again, I think this is the most narrow part of West Street, right there. And of course, you've got the duplex development to the right on the side of the Brook, so... So, this fits right in, we believe. Provides two little complexes or two compounds right in a row.
Anything else, Ted? We can go back to you.
You said four two-bedrooms in the main building.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, that's it. No more questions. And it'll all meet the requirements for means of egress and...
Absolutely. We only anticipated outdoor, outside change would be the necessity of a new staircase on that building and also the perhaps new necessity of a new staircase on the garage. But again, those will have to fit in within the confines.
And one more question. Everything is two bedrooms?
Correct.
Even the back main house, so it's gonna be...
I don't know, Marlon.
The single-family home, it is four-bedroom right now. The apartment above the garage would be two bedrooms.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Bob?
I'm good.
Anybody else wanna be heard on this application? If not, you have the last word before we close the hearing. Take another one.
So, I'll probably put in here that there'll be seven two-bedroom units and one four-bedroom unit, okay?
Fine.
Okay, okay.
No intention to alter the existing single-family residence. That will remain a single-family residence as is.
So, no more than eight units?
No more than eight units. Seven units of two-bedroom, one unit would be the four-bedroom unit.
Right. In that house, it is in good shape. You know, there is not much to do in that unit.
The one in the back?
The single-family, yes.
The four-bedroom?
Yes.
And as Dave stipulated, if you're gonna sell this, you gotta sell the whole thing.
Yes.
And it can never return to a business again.
No, because we've lost the nonconformity. That's correct. So, this is a direct cessation of the nonconforming use. It's gone. Okay? And your bylaw is clear. Once it's gone, it can't come back. Right? So, I...again, as I said, I...
Listen, if I was you, get rid of the tie, we'll close the hearing, and we're good to go.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
With that, it's the pleasure of the board.
I would like to see, so no more than eight units?
Deed restricted?
Deed restricted. No...
For the subdividing the property?
No, yeah, no subdivision of property because it's all in one lot. So, no subdivision of property, deed restricted. Okay, and then, so seven units would be two bedrooms?
Yeah.
And one unit would be four bedrooms, for the total of eight units.
Okay. Anything else?
Maybe some, like, four-inch Calipar trees out front, maybe.
You wanna get a check with somebody else? All right, I have a motion that no more than eight units, which is deed restricted, no further subdividing the property. That is also would be deed restricted in the deed. There'd be seven two-bedroom units. One unit has an existing four-bedroom home for a total not to exceed eight units. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bob. All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I'm sure you'll do a great job. Sad to see it go.
That's a good one.
Good luck. Congratulations. I think, anything else we need to cover tonight? Is that the last one?
Steve, you did a great job tonight.
With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.